I'd like to call the order of this regular meeting of the Boulder Valley Board of Education for Tuesday, October 10th, 2017. Laura, could you please call the roll?
Valval.
Here.
Benford.
Here.
Fuqua.
Here.
Garcia.
Here.
Gebhardt.
Here.
Marquess.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Please join us in the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to remind everybody that the mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so that all children thrive and are prepared for successful, civically engaged lives. Good evening. Welcome, everybody in the audience, and those of you watching at home. We're glad to have you with us. We'll begin, as always, with the superintendent's report. Good evening, Dr. Stevenson.
Thank you. Few things this evening, and at the end of my report, I will get to your request around staffing. But just to start with, I've been able to visit in the last couple of weeks Douglas, Creekside, Community Montessori, Birch, Emerald, Broomfield Heights, and Broomfield Senior. And I will tell you that you need to feel very good about your schools and very good about your teachers and your leaders. It's been a wonderful opportunity to visit the schools. Last Saturday, I spent time with the PTA presidents. They were meeting all day. And that's another group that you look at and you just go, my goodness, they are so committed to their schools and they so deeply believe in what they're doing. I've been going to Green Star School assemblies. And in fact, we had a little conversation today. We're kind of hoping our schools quit recycling quite so much, so we don't have to go to quite so many Green Star assemblies. But they really are very impressive. The kids really have earned the right to have this assembly because of their recycling efforts and their concern for the environment. The, I did get to listen to Mark Schaefer's high school advisory group last Friday morning. And we had high school students from all of our high schools, and they were advising Mark. And I haven't seen him take their advice yet, but I'm sure he will be. But they are so fun to listen to, and they have such a wonderful perspective about their schools and about the kids in their schools and about what they want from their schools. We had our first district leadership team meeting, and we talked about that we're all building our field of dreams, and leaders need to have that field of dreams. We got our test scores. And so we have our 2016-2017 park scores. And the big news for Boulder Valley is that our students on IEPs are outperforming their peers across the state. So if you look at the numbers, we still have a gap that we have to close. But our children with disabilities are generally scoring higher than every other school district in the state. And I think we need to be proud of that, and we still have lots of work to do. But our teachers are doing incredible work. We did have our quarterly meeting with the University of Colorado and the county of Boulder. And then you have this report. You requested a report on staffing. So you have these numbers. And if you look at it, we have hired about 300 people. There, you can see the new hires, 166 rehires, I believe that's 80, and transfers, 56. And then if you look at previous employment of our new hires, obviously, that the majority, the previous employment is other school districts, other districts. And you can see where we are hiring people from. If you go across, you can look at our numbers of teachers of color. And you can see that by the years. And you can see that although we are slightly lower in '17, '18 than we were in '16, '17, we are still really focused on making sure that we have a diverse workforce. And then finally, if you look at our teaching experience, if you look at zero to three years, and you can look at 3.5 to 10 years, 10.5 to 20 years, and 21 years. And you will notice that we have hired people who have 21 years of experience. And you have all the numbers there. So you had requested some information on staffing, and that's our latest information. Oh, one other thing, our administrators. We have hired 29 new administrators, and five of those administrators are people of color. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stevenson. Board members, questions or comments for the superintendent based on her report? Yes, Richard?
On the new teachers, the new hires, teachers of color, could you give us a breakdown in terms of what color?
Yes, I can't off the top of my head. But we could get it to you next.
We could get that to you. The majority of them are Latino, but there are a few African-Americans.
We'll get the exact numbers to you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Richard. Kathy?
A question that I was thinking that you don't have the answer off the top of your head to either, Dr. Stevenson, but I'm just curious about what this looks like from historical perspective. Have we always had this number of new hires with zero to three years? I'm just wondering how it reflects on the longevity of our teaching force, if people are leaving in greater numbers. So I'm just curious how this would look maybe over the last two or three years, if it's consistent or not.
I can tell you, I have the last two years in front of me. The last two years are very close. The numbers are very similar. But we can do some other research over the last five years and let you know what our hiring has been like over the last five years. I'm assuming, Mike, you can do that quickly?
Yeah, but I have additional information.
All right, Mike, come on up.
Just a couple things to note. As we had 166 new hires, if you look at the previous years, I don't have the exact numbers, but they've been pretty steady. What's been interesting is our neighboring districts are hiring a lot more, but I think because we're retaining a lot more than we used to. And I think a lot of that has to do with what I've been able to do in my short three months is do an analysis around, we're doing around professional learning. There's a lot of great support for new teachers in this district, lots of support, to the point where there's mentors for each teacher. So a big shout out to Mary Jo Bode and her people in terms of what they're doing for new teachers and how they're getting them, because it's about the support more so than anything else. So I think it's really a tribute to that. That number's lower than last year, just so you know. And it may be also, too, our population is lower of kids. But even still, if you take a comparison of the neighboring districts, we're much lower, and we're retaining a lot more than we used to.
That answers my question. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Tina?
Yeah, and just to follow up on the teachers of color, I would be curious to know how the retention is going. I know that in the last report, they had indicated a little bit of a retention issue, and I'd like to just see if some of the efforts that they put into that.
I think the retention issue is very serious. Do we have any data on retention of our teachers of color?
No, not at this point. But something that I'm interested in as well. I do know that the supports for them go out as well. But I mean, it's for all. But I think all of it, all of that support is good for all teachers. I think one of the things that I know we're wanting to talk about is actually having sessions and meetings with teachers of color and then interviewing them as to what needs they have, or what they're not getting, and what they like, and things of that sort. And I know there's a committee working on a questionnaire on onboarding on new teachers. And this would likely take, maybe take this a little deeper with our teachers of color and providing that support for them. So I'm actually, even though I'm here for a short time, I'm really trying to initiate some new things. That really would make a difference.
One of the things that we learned in a school district I used to work in was that we could hire teachers of color. And frequently, we did have trouble retaining them because they didn't have a group. They didn't have a culture. They didn't have a place where they felt at home. So we really had to look and say, how can we begin to make people feel like part of the community? Because they weren't working in communities that, where they felt welcomed and embraced. So we really did have to work hard on the retention.
You know, one other statistic you should know about is, as I've traveled through the districts, last year alone, of all of the institutions that we have of higher ed that are putting out teachers, 75% of those candidates were white female. So there's not a whole lot that are coming into the field of teaching, of teachers of color. So the question really is, how do we build that pool? And that pool is only going to be built by building our own or growing our own. And there's a lot of great ideas out there that some districts and throughout the country that are, they're doing some great things around how you do that. And that's recruiting at the high school level, what those candidates might be in terms of interest, getting an interest in them and in some teaching, and then some incentives for them to actually go through a program and do that. So food for thought.
Other questions for Dr. Stevenson? All right. Oh, yes, Richard?
In terms of the administrations, administrators that you've been hiring, you mentioned five administrators of color?
Mm-hmm.
Again, are they Latino administrators, African-American? And are they building principals primarily, or where are they landing?
Primarily building principals, primarily Latino, or I believe Latin. And they were people already within the system that might have been IEPs, or they are TESU.
So there's some promotion then going on. Great, thank you.
Thanks, Richard. Other questions? All right. Thank you, Dr. Stevenson. We'll jump the order a little bit on our agenda to move to what we had down as an information item. This past May, the Boulder Valley School District had a number of teams compete in the Kaiser Permanente Colfax Marathon Government Relay, and two teams from the district placed among the fastest teams. One team placed second in the women's division, and a team from Centaurus High School placed fifth in the public schools division. Cree Kelly, race director from the Colfax Marathon, is with us to present the winning teams. If you would come up, Cree, and folks from Centaurus, anybody else who's here to celebrate these victories can join Cree at the podium. Good evening, welcome.
Thank you. I'm Andrea Doughty. So Cree and I often do these presentations, but it's me tonight, so.
Oh, sorry, Andrea.
No, that's okay. I'd first like to introduce RJ Amagra from Kaiser Permanente, who's our key partner in this event.
Hi, I'm RJ Almargre with Kaiser Permanente. I'm pleased to be here this evening because health of the Boulder Valley School District's employees and Coloradans is important to us. We are here today to recognize the district's second-place team finish and the fifth-place team finish, as you've just mentioned. Events like the Colfax Marathon are opportunities for Kaiser Permanente to fulfill its mission of improving the health in the communities we serve, and we are proud to support it. Kaiser Permanente has partnered with the Colfax Marathon on providing funding to community organizations of the winning relay teams' choice. We hope that the district will be back next year, maybe throw down some healthy challenges within the district, and maybe go to other districts as well to increase participation. So congratulations to the winning teams. And once again, we'll go back to Andrea.
Thank you. So this is one of the most fun times of the year because I get to carry around big checks, and my popularity increases as I walk down the street. It's really quite fun. Then I explain to people that these really don't go to the bank, that we have real checks as well. But thanks so much for having us here. So to give an idea to the board and also to the audience here tonight, we had 19,000 runners this year, 1,250 relay teams, 60 of the teams, just 60 out of 1,200, won awards. And two of them were from Boulder Valley, which doesn't surprise me because you've got a lot of runners here. We're hoping to see that maybe you'll have more than two teams actually win money next year. It really makes us happy to be able to give money, not only back to charity, but back to schools as well. So this is a fun evening for us. Just to give you an idea, right now, in the last five years, runners have raised over $4 million for charity through the Colfax Marathon. We have about 200 charity partners, including schools and school districts are charity partners. And during the year, we also, at the very end, give out about $100,000 from the Colfax Marathon and Kaiser Permanente, just as we're doing tonight. So it's very fun. And again, one of our missions is really to give back to the community, as well as have a really fun race. So I'd like to go ahead and mention who the teams are. We have the Boulder Valley School District Team Three. Kristin McLaurin is representing the team tonight. You get to carry the big check home. Or better yet, you should give it right away to Colorado I Have a Dream. And we have Zoe Jordan, who's here tonight, representing Colorado I Have a Dream, which is wonderful. So $2,000, which is absolutely terrific. I have to say, to win second place in the government division is a big feat for the women's. So congratulations, you ran quite fast. And we have a trophy, as well as the individual trophies we'll send with you, too. And if you don't mind staying up here, we'd love to have a photo with everybody when we're done. Then we have Centaurus High School runners. And tonight, we have with us Devin Rourke, Daniel Ryan, Kimberly Becker, and then Carol Molly and Pamela Boralis are also on the team, fifth in the public schools division with a time of 3:25.23. What we did is, we had so many teams of teachers running, teachers are really setting examples for kids, it's absolutely terrific, that we added a whole entire public schools division. So not only can you win the government cup, you can win the public schools division. We want to make teachers really rock it, so they can go back to their schools and set wonderful examples. So tonight, $1,000. And in the public schools division, you give the check to your own school. So this is terrific. And I remembered your own check, too. This is the one that goes to the bank, small one. Large one. And I also want to go ahead and hand you the check. You need to definitely take that back. So I just want to say thank you so much. We'd love to see more and more teams from Boulder Valley. If you guys have a lot more teams win, it's fine. We'll just bring a lot more money up to the city of Boulder. It's not a problem with us. So congratulations to these teams. Thank you so much for having us tonight.
Thank you, Andrea. Thank you, RJ. We appreciate the Colfax Marathon and Kaiser's support for this very much. And let you get your photo there. Oh, we appreciate you very much. Thank you for joining us, and thank you for supporting running. And we hear your message about needing more teams. So maybe a school board team next year. Yeah, yeah. Is that a relay? Is that kind of what it works?
The longest leg is this one.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. You could do that, Tina.
Okay.
All right. All right, thank you, everybody. We appreciate it. We'll move to the next item on our agenda, which is the District Accountability Committee reports. And I believe we have a member of the DAC coming to the podium now.
Thanks for having me.
My name's Nicole Roche-Paul, and I am representing DAC tonight. After thorough consideration on this topic, the DAC at this time recommends that the Board of Education not approve the expansion application for Community Montessori Elementary School. And I know you were all briefed on our decision beforehand via memo. But if there are any particulars you'd like me to elaborate on, I'm very happy to do that at this time.
Yeah, and board members, I'll just clue you in. We had a DAC report at the top of the agenda. We do have the specific item on the Community Montessori proposal as a study item, but since Nicole is with us now, we can talk about it at this time. And you've all seen their report, as well as the staff recommendation, I assume. Any questions or comments, either for Nicole, or Dr. Stevenson, or other members of the staff?
I see that we have our dear principal from Community Montessori here. I'm just wondering if we're going to have an opportunity to have a conversation with the school as it relates to these particular recommendations, because the recommendations, I would like to know a little bit more about the recommendations, and a little bit more about what Community Montessori is thinking of doing as it relates to maybe working towards meeting some of the concerns that DAC brought up.
And Tina?
Yeah, I just had, so just thank you for all the work that DAC did on the recommendation, because I know this took a lot of time and effort. And I wanted to just show my appreciation for the suggestion around looking at schools that have weight loss and understanding what the needs are through some kind of parent engagement. So just to make sure that, you know, in a choice system, we're meeting the needs of students. And this is a, you know, a need that has been presented to us that we may not be extending. And I want to make sure that we are considering the whole, the district-wide, just as you've indicated in the first bullet of the second page.
And that was a big, a big concern from DAC overall. We truly recognize that there's a need for different approaches to learning at the middle school level that may not be thoroughly fleshed out within our district. At this time, we just, we would like the board to pursue that and figure out how we can identify some of those needs for alternative learning environments within the physical structures that already exist. It was brought to our attention that there are about 650 vacant seats at the middle school level, which shows that there's room for growth, that we have the space in those areas. And additionally, we would really, we recognize that this is the first time in a long time that a school has provided an application for expansion. And we felt like the process could benefit from some improvement from some structure with very specific questions that maybe Community Montessori can use in the future as well, should they decide to apply in the future. So those two big takeaways, we thought were of value to this school district.
And so, and you preempted my second point, which was about the policy, and just making sure that we might, we might want to take some time to look at the policy and the process and make sure that we can do a better, you know, see if we can do a better job with this. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Tom?
So are we going to talk more about this on the study item? Because I have a number of questions and comments.
Yeah, we can come back to it, if you like.
Yeah, well, we do that, yeah.
If you can stay, Nicole.
I don't know if I have any questions for DAC, but about the, in general.
Yeah, for staff, okay.
Maybe. Nicole, would you mind just giving us a brief summary of the other things that district accountability has done? You've been a great group, and you've had two very strong meetings. And just give us a picture of some of the other things that district accountability has accomplished.
That's a great question. Yeah, so we've been, we've had actually just one full meeting this year, and we were looking at the DEA policy, the open enrollment policy that was presented by the Board of Education and the Boulder Valley School Districts. And so that really is our role, to sort of bridge the gap between the school accountabilities, committees, and the Board of Education. And so what we take on is, really does come from the board and from the superintendent, and from our local elementary, middle, middle and high schools. So that's what we've taken on so far this year. And we are looking forward to a lot of different discussions around budget recommendations, other policy initiatives that are coming down the pike, things of that nature.
Other questions? All right, thank you very much. We appreciate the DAC, as always. Thank you for being here. And more on the Community Montessori decision later in the agenda, although without the DAC. Next item is public hearing and public participation. Laura, I understand nobody has signed up this evening?
That's correct.
All right. Next item on our agenda is board communication. Board members, who would like to begin? Kathy?
I want to thank Sandy Riplinger and Ginger for the table at I Have a Dream. I got to go to the I Have a Dream luncheon last week, and as always, it was a wonderful event. Met some very amazing young students who have overcome amazing obstacles to be where they are. And you just look at them, and you see the resilience in them and bright futures. But you also know that there's other students that we need to be providing those same opportunities to that haven't been able to be part of those classes. So we still have a long way to go. But thank you for including me at the luncheon and for the opportunity to meet everybody at the luncheon. And then today, Richard and I got to go to the visioning for the Arapahoe campus. And Jenny, you'll be happy, they're now calling it the Boulder Valley Tech Center. They even reordered lanyards that say Boulder Valley on them. So, but that was a really, it was a very interesting process to hear all of the different ideas. And I think that some of the programs that we want to bring on are going to be very exciting and great for our students. And one of the tasks that we undertook today was, how do we get the good word out about all of the programming and all the good work that's going on at Boulder Valley Tech? So I just want to say thank you to Joan and to Mark for including us in that, because it was just great to be included in part of that discussion.
It's nice to know that I've had some impact on the school district.
Richard?
I also want to thank Cindy for inviting me to sit at her table for the Great Ed Colorado Luncheon. It was a wonderful luncheon. They honored Gary, the Garry's, for all the hard work they've done over the years. And we had, the Teacher of the Year was there, and we had a small little ensemble from Holyoke that came and sang. And it was just a wonderful, wonderful luncheon. And I think a lot of people left that luncheon with a lot of good feelings. Yeah, and I want to just add a little bit to what Kathy was saying in terms of the visioning for the tech center. It, there's a lot of excitement around it, you know? And I think that the outreach and getting the word out, I think, is a big thing that they're going to tackle next. So I was very excited to be at that particular visioning meeting that we had. And there was something else that I was going to say, but I spaced it out, but it'll come back. So give me.
We can come back to you. Other comments, board members? Jenny?
You're right, Richard. The Great Education Luncheon was and always is a great event. It does make you feel, I think it's really, sometimes the political environment, and you turn on the news and you feel sort of depressed. And then you go to an event like that where a lot of, there's a lot of energy in the room and a lot of commitment to public education. And, you know, we have a lot of heavy lifting to do in the state of Colorado to improve the funding situation for most of our schools. Boulder Valley is really fortunate in our funding situation. And a lot of, but there's still a lot of wonderful stuff going on and a lot of real positive energy. So it was a great event. And then I went to the, and several of us were at the, Tom and Kathy, I think that's it, the three of us were at the Douglas Ribbon Cutting. I don't, oh, no, Shelley, you were there because I talked to you, yes. So several of us were at the ribbon cutting for Douglas Elementary, which is a really beautiful new building. I'd seen Emerald, but I hadn't had an opportunity to see Douglas yet. And they've done something, something very different there, but still a lot of innovation space and a lot of energy devoted to, you know, that particular building. So, and I think it'll be a real benefit for the community as well. So, and I don't wish to overlook some of our schools that aren't as beautiful as Douglas, but it is fun to see that new building, so.
It came back. Saturday, the Boulder Valley School District, along with a few other community sponsors, will be sponsoring the Second Annual Latino Parents Summit at Casey Middle School. So I would invite every one of us to be there, if we could. I know Cindy, you're going to be there in the morning, I think, to do a lot of welcoming for the group. We're expecting, we're between 100 and 120 parents to show up this year. I know last year, we had about 90 parents that signed up and only about maybe 50 showed up. But I think we're going to have a better turnout this year, so. Yeah. Oh, and the other thing, too, is I want to ask you, Cindy, if you can set up a visit for me to go visit Broomfield High School and visit their CAD program?
Okay. We'll do it.
Visit coming up. Thanks, Richard. Any other comments, board members? Tom?
Yeah, so thanks, Jenny, for reminding us about the Douglas Ribbon Cutting. I just wanted to say a few words. I had the opportunity to speak for the board there. And I told the students there that my three sons were Dolphins, too. There are the Dolphins there, because all of my three sons went through Douglas. So it was bittersweet for me in that I was used to that old building. In fact, when I first walked into that old building, I thought, this just looks just like the elementary school I went to, you know? And that was about the era. So the building was old and it had a lot of issues. But it's a lot of sentiment, and a lot of sentiment by the community. And, you know, the community that attended there, they're attending there now. But that new building is just, is just awesome. And I stopped by on Saturday. They're starting to get a lot of the landscaping finished up now. And so I think it's really going to be a great asset to our school system. So, thank you.
Great, thanks. Other comments, board members? All right, thank you all. We'll move to the next item on our agenda. Action items, consent grouping, including 8.1 personnel items, 8.2 approval of minutes, September 26, 2017 special meeting, 8.3 approval of minutes, September 26, 2017 regular meeting, 8.4 acceptance of donation, Flatirons Elementary, 8.5 mental health partners services agreement for Special Education Day Program Services, and 8.6 food service, No Student Hungry Weekend Nutrition Bag Program Number Two, City of Boulder, 17. Are there any items board members would like to pull from the consent grouping? Hearing none. Need a motion to approve the consent grouping? Motion from Tina, second from Kathy. Are there any items board members have questions about? Hearing none. Oh, yes, Tina?
On the item 8.6, the grant for food service?
On the item 8.6, the grant for food service, is this, has this grant been approved or are we asking for this grant?
Not yet. It's a continuation grant. We were approved last year and it came to the Board and so this is an additional funding for 2018.
Okay. And the, and my only question is just a technical question of whether, so this is funding that originates from the City of Boulder Sota Tax?
Yes.
And we don't run into any issues, you know, using the money across our district even though they're not City of Boulder schools?
No, and I think that's part of the application, so we include the schools that we intend to serve in the application.
Okay, thank you.
It's nice that there's some additional money available to help. Other questions? All right, hearing none, Laura, could you please call the vote on the motion to approve, to approve the consent grouping?
Bell Val?
Yes.
Benford?
Yes.
Fugwa?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Gabhart?
Yes.
Marquess?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, back to study item 10.1, Community Montessori Proposal for Focus School Expansion, the Montessori Adolescent Program. That's the first study item. Dr. Stevenson?
I think one of the things that will come up tonight is the quality of the program at Community Montessori. There is no question but this is a quality program. Children are well-treated. I had the opportunity to visit and spend some time there and the classrooms are full of energy. It really is a wonderful place for children. So I would not want anyone on the Board to think that the recommendations from both our Accountability Committee and from the District Committee, which say it is not the right time to expand the program, has anything to do with the quality of the program that they're running. It's, it's a remarkable experience for children. I really do believe that. That said, we have followed the policy and we had a subcommittee from District Accountability. And I want to be very clear, the subcommittee operates fairly independently from the staff. They, we don't go and say this is what we think, this is what we think you ought to do. They're very independent. They looked at the application and they have outlined for you the reasons that they are not recommending currently that the school expand. I'd like to give a little more time to the district recommendations because what the policy does is you have to have one committee from your Accountability Committee, you have to have a separate District Committee. So the District Committee has the same recommendation for you, that this is not the time for Community Montessori to expand. And so just a few of the points that are in the letter to you from the district, actually I think they wrote it to me and then I sent it to you. First of all, there's no question but that the school surveyed their own parents and the parents within the school do support the expansion. However, at this point, the school could hold the sixth grade but the school cannot hold the seventh and eighth grades. So given that the space is at this time inadequate and that the cost of expanding the school could go to $10 million, plus there will be an additional cost to run the sixth and seventh, sixth, seventh and eighth grade program. So it would be more expensive every year because we'd be increasing staffing, we'd be increasing the middle school seats. Currently, we have an excess capacity of 650 students at the middle school. So part of the dilemma for the committees is to say, we have a great school, we know it's a great school, serves children well. On the other hand, we are supporting our other middle school programs and if we expand Community Montessori, we're continuing to add to the excess that we currently have with middle school. And enrollment at Community Montessori is currently stable and we don't have long waiting lists. They do a great job. That's not in any way a criticism of the work they're doing, but they don't have big waiting lists. I believe they have one at, second, fourth, I'm sorry, maybe four and fourth. I think they have a waiting list at fourth grade.
Kindergarten waitlist is 11.
Kindergarten waitlist is 11, thank you Sandy. So what the district has recommended is not at this time. What the DAC has recommended is not at this time, given the cost, given the middle school seats that we have, and so those are the two recommendations according to policy.
Thank you, Dr. Stevenson. Questions, comments, board members? Tom, you said you had a few?
So in reading through the proposal here, I mean, maybe you can give us the Board a little background here. What they said is this was a proposal in response to BVSD leadership's request to propose it. So I don't understand, you know, from their standpoint, you say propose it and then you turn it down, so I'm trying to understand that and try to be sensitive to our community.
The current district leadership did not propose this. This was a proposal made over a year ago and it was a casual comment and I understand why it was taken seriously but it was not the current district administration, if that makes sense. I'm trying to be-
Yeah, 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 I'm reading between the lines. But I, but I still am sensitive to that community and, and their feelings about this. I guess my other question would be, you know, have, has that community had an opportunity to respond, you know, to these recommendations and the various points yet? And, and will they be given a, an opportunity to respond? And what is the criteria? Are we going to be able to, you know, succinctly say, here's the criteria?
Right. I think that's a really fair question. There's nothing in the policy about going back and forth, so I can give you both perspectives. I think giving the school an opportunity to respond is certainly fair to the school and gives us additional information. However, I would caution the Board that as you get into these considerations with both charters and focus schools, and as I said, in that other district I used to work in, we learned that you don't come to the Board and say, okay, here are all our questions, now go revise your proposal. Because what you end up doing is not ever able to turn down a proposal. Because of course, once you say, can you change this, can you change that? And again, there is nothing in the Community Montessori program that is in any way, shape or form not the best. It is, it is a wonderful school. It is good for kids. So the issues really are money and if you look at their, they have the grid in there of the cost to expand and the cost to run the school every year. The issues really are the finances and the number of middle school openings we have in the district. And it is not an issue around whether, whether Community Montessori runs a good program. I think everybody would say Community Montessori runs a great program. The other, the other question we've been asked is, well, could we just put this expansion in another middle school where there's space? I have not had the opportunity to talk to Community Montessori about that. I, I think that would be hard because one of the things you look at in the proposal is they've really investigated the Montessori and they need a barn. That's one of the things you have, with secondary Montessori, you have a barn, you have, you have some different kinds of facilities. And right now, I, I would question whether we're ready to be able to build a barn. So if we move them into another middle school, they're still not going to have the, the facility that they want.
Yeah, yeah, thanks. Well, you know, since this is on study now, it won't be coming back to the vote. I understand, you know, your warnings there, but I, I perceive that we will get that anyway because it will be coming back again. So it would be nice though, maybe to have some conversations around what happened.
Sure.
Yeah.
Thanks, Tom. Tina?
Yeah, this is a question just more out of curiosity about the expansion process. The, so one of the parts of the expansion suggests that they hire an assistant principal but their total population of students is 436, which is below the threshold for earning an assistant principal. Should we have it called out that they're looking for an exception to our general staffing guidance? I'm not going to, I know that these are not like in the line and stuff but I was just, or is this consistent with staffing guidelines but it, you know, but it was, this is a different model so it made sense? I'm just curious how that works.
The way I read the proposal, and Shannon, please raise your hand and tell me if I'm totally crazy, but the way I read the proposal was, given the difficulty of expanding and building, that they were going to need additional support. I don't know that you expected that person to stay forever.
Well, actually, I thought it was part of it and I thought it was okay, middle school ratio, assistant principal and K-8 ratio.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Richard, then Shelley.
Shannon, how long did it take you to put this proposal together?
A week.
A week?
Well, let me, so-
You know, Shannon, it might help the folks watching and for the record, if you had joined us at the podium, Principal Shannon Minch, welcome. Nice to see you.
Thank you. So we started the process last year when someone spoke to us about it and it was just an exploration and then when Dr. Stevenson came on board, she wisely said, let's follow the, the process. So we pulled out the policy and from that discussion to when it was due, we had a week. So then the committee met and then we had some follow-up questions and then we added to it, but it was a week to put the proposal together.
Was there at any time, any kind of interaction between you all and district leadership? Because I, I guess my concern is that knowing why the recommendations are such, why didn't they tell you while you were in the process that this was probably a no-go to begin with?
We did meet with Dr. Stevenson and Sandy Riplinger and two parents and myself to talk about the policy and go through it and then we were on our own for that next week. I appreciated following the process and looking at the policy. I think, I, I do think it would be great to look at the policy and work on it since we are one of the first people who've done it in a long time. It was, we look at it as hopefully a blueprint for the future because our, our families support it, our teachers support it, there are other families who would be welcomed to the middle level program. And so as Tina mentioned, we are a school district of choice and this could be something in the future. So we, we, understanding that it, we didn't understand the financial piece last year that wasn't discussed with us and so if it happens in the future, we would look at ways to fundraise and, and look at grants and look at other things but it, it, we didn't, it was hard to do but we did appreciate that it could be something for the future.
20% of your enrollment is probably Latino students, right? Somewhere around there?
Yes.
And I've been to your school a number of times and I know that the Latino parents are in love with Community Montessori. What's going to happen to these particular students once they leave Community Montessori? Is there an experience that they're going to be able to get into that's similar to Community Montessori afterwards?
Right now, the closest middle school that is like our program is Platt Choice but it's very hard to get into Platt Choice. So our students go all over the district from Angivine to Casey, Summit, Southern Hills. So they do well because of the skills that they've learned because of course, like many schools, we focus on the whole child. But they have to change from being an alternative setting to a traditional and so that's, it is a challenge for a lot of our kids. And our Latino students are, and parents really appreciate the small community feel and so sometimes they get lost or don't have that sense of welcoming or have to start it over. And so I think a lot of people were looking for the continuation of being with us from three to eighth grade.
But you said they do well, after they leave you, they do well at the middle schools?
Generally speaking, however, we are studying our English language learners and they don't necessarily leave ELL services after they leave us. And so we're looking at that and we've stopped pull-out and we're doing co-teaching to support our students.
Yeah, thank you very much, Shannon. I really appreciate your answers and I think one of the things that, that, that I think we should start thinking about, I know that money is an issue, I know that policies are issues and stuff like that, but I think that we need to start thinking outside of the box in terms of what can we do to provide more opportunities for some of the students that really need this, this lift in terms of what you are doing at Community Montessori.
Thank you.
So I, I really want to get into some discussion at some point in terms of what is it that we can do to support Community Montessori's of the world and all other, other approaches.
Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Other questions or comments? I see Shelley and then Jenny.
Hi, Shannon.
Hi, Shelley.
Thanks for bringing forth the application. I, I know that for quite a few years, I've been hearing about this middle school, so it was good to finally see it on paper. I, I have a couple of specific questions and then some general ones. I, I noticed that the cost was pretty high and I'm wondering why especially for sixth grade it was so high, given that you could have just stayed in your same building and probably added some staff, but that cost was like a million dollars or something for sixth grade. So can you say more about that?
I would have to look back at that. Really, we'd be hiring our new teacher and assistant and then supplying the classroom with materials. Montessori materials are expensive but once you have them, you have them for a long period of time. Without having it in front of me, I don't recall why it was a million dollars. That seems high.
It does seem high and I wondered if that just contributed to the whole, you know, obviously did, the whole cost of it, which was a factor in evaluating this.
Right. Because we do have the space.
Right.
So it's not a space issue, but it's a staffing issue.
Exactly. So that was a little confusing to me. And also, you, you made the comment about fundraising for this and had, I mean, was your comment like, had we known, we could have fundraised, like, is that what you were implying?
It was our assumption that, we, we weren't sure. I questioned this, that why was it brought forward if there wasn't money? And so, but I have a, a community that would fundraise if, I mean, they're so passionate about this and if we had more time, we would look at other funding opportunities to support the program. So that was my comment. We, we didn't, I don't feel like we had the time and especially with cycles of grants and such, we have probably missed the boat on many.
Right. So knowing that, that your community might be able to fundraise for this, would you anticipate that you might bring this back in the future?
That's a question I have for everybody else. Is there, you know, is there a time limit? What's the policy? How do you bring it back? Because we would like, I hear Dr. Stevenson with the warning about going back and forth but what, what is the possibility for the future? And can we answer the questions that people had and can we solve some of the questions?
Can I comment on that? I think absolutely, the feeling is, it's not the right time now. But I don't think anyone thought in the future, you couldn't bring this back. I, anyone who's worked on it knows that you're on a good program. Right now may not be the time for the expansion, but I think, I suspect Boulder Valley would expect it to come back at some point.
And we'd like to do it right. We don't want to rush, you know, we'd like to make sure we have a solid program and that every question is answered and that we understand funding sources, but, so we would like to bring it back.
Right. So as I look at this, it seems like in looking at the DAC report and listening to Cindy about the district's report, that there are sort of some implicit criteria that we're judging you by that may not have been explicit. And so I think it's really important that we make those explicit and that we apply those to any school that comes forward to us, focus or charter or anything, and that we're very clear that we're, you know, not doing this for one school and that for another school. So I, I think this was helpful not only for you but for us, you know, to have you go through this process. And then I, the, the last thing I would say is that over my many years on the Board, there have been several occasions, in fact, it continues today, where there are really long waitlists for certain schools. And the whole philosophical purpose of focus in charter schools is to demonstrate a different kind of curriculum, a different kind of learning that might be popular among a larger group of people than just the people that are there in that school. So, you know, I would really encourage us to think about maybe, in some of our schools that, I know they're all good schools, but in some of them that don't have a very specific curriculum, thinking about converting, converting that curriculum to one where there's these massive waitlists because that is the whole purpose of doing these kinds of schools. And this is just a, a perfect example of that. So thank you, Shannon. Appreciate your effort.
Thanks, Shelley. Let's go to Jenny and then come to the side.
I'm actually going to build on what you say because I, I think it's kind of lined up with what you just said, Shelley. And, and it's, that was an interesting comment in the DAC report about the, the need for different approaches for middle school children as much as for elementary school children and the relative-
for middle school children as much as for elementary school children and the relative lack of that choice in Boulder Valley for middle-level kids. I mean, because I know we've also had discussions over the years about, well, what about what happens to kids in our bilingual programs who, you know, graduate from fifth grade? Where do they go? And so, I, and this is just sort of a suggestion for the future, which is it might behoove us as a district to think about choice in a, in a more holistic way rather than just a, a program, you know, a relatively small, in fact, a very small program for Montessori, which was, you know, here. And to sort of think overall about what would, what should choi, should choice at the middle level look like in Boulder Valley? And I think that is a conversation that, I know there are lots of conversations going on and I don't wish to deplete our energies. But, but it's certainly something to think about, especially if we think that, that we may be entertaining charter proposals into the future and we may see this proposal in the future. How does it fit in with, with what's, and we've got the Platt, I mean, just the waitlist for Platt, Cho, Platt. So, it's just something to think about.
Thank you. Kathy? Or Tina?
And also just reiterating what Shelley and Jenny were saying, I think it, and also what I was saying to Nicole, is I hope that we do look at our middle school offerings. But I also want to recognize that we looked at the waitlist at Casey and the need for bilingual students and did add a bilingual program at Manhattan. And we did that fairly quickly. So, I just want to look at that. And then also again, looking at the geographies of where the waitlists are. Because we certainly have some geographical trends on waitlists that I think we need to understand a little bit more about just the physical geography.
And the DAC recommendation is that we revise our application process. And I think Shelley's touched on a little bit of what that might look like, which is some more explicit questions as opposed to trying to second guess what we're thinking. Do you have any specific recommendations for how we might improve this process going forward?
I would have to look at the policy again, but there was, there were definitely some things that felt repetitive or unclear. So, you'd go through and it would talk about budget. And then there was a financial section. And to me, that was the same thing. So, I would be happy to look through it again and see what was challenging to fill out along with the questions to see where the disconnect was.
That would be great. Because if we can improve this process going forward, that would be really helpful. So, if we could get that feedback from you and anybody that was on your team that could give us some of that feedback so we can fix that, that'd be great. Thanks.
Yes, Jennifer Doobie is one of my teachers who is a co-writer, so I will enlist her.
Thanks.
So, thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. Yeah, Shelley?
I was just looking at the DAC comments again. And one of their implicit criteria was that, well, what they said was that the parents were surveyed and the parents all won in middle school, but the kids weren't surveyed. So, there's no guarantee those kids were going to go to the middle school. And I, I just think if that's going to be a, a criteria here, we ought to think about that. So, kids aren't choosing schools their parents don't want to send them to.
Right.
I just thought that was funny.
Well, thanks, board members. If there's no further question or comment. Dr. Stevenson, where do you see the input and then the possible revision of this process that has been called out by the DAC, by the principal and by some board members?
Are you talking about the policy?
Yeah.
I've already kind of started clicking off in my brain who I need to bring into the room to look at the policy and what revisions need to be made. And I think we can talk with Shannon. I think she'd help us. She's, she's lived through it. And so, I would say, give us, oh, give us a day or two and we'll have a revision. No, I'd say if you could give us till after the first of January. I think we can revise the policy over the next six weeks or so.
Appreciate that. Shannon, oh, Tom, yes?
Just one question. Do you think it's possible or even appropriate to give some clearer guidelines on the criteria within that policy? Or is that something that should be established by the board by a separate action?
I think that's a really good question. I'd like to work with the people who have worked more closely with the process and find out what they think. I think Shannon will be a resource. Sandy Riplinger will be a resource. They've worked closely with it in the last couple of weeks. And I always think there's a question about policy and regulation in that you have to be careful not to get policy so specific that you can't do the interpretation. So, we may need to look at policy and regulation. We may need to create a regulation that has some very specific expectations. And then that way, the school can look at the policy for the parameters, whoa, excuse me, but then use the regulation for the actual work.
Right. Good. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, everybody. Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time and participation and more importantly, a high-quality program at your school. Thank you. The next item, another study item, board members, is coming back to the draft of the school district attorney policy, which we talked about a couple of weeks ago. And we've had some further input into that conversation. You have the draft in your agenda. Also had some excerpts from periodic policies to look at. And I'd just like to kind of start the discussion with each board member, perhaps giving their take or recommendations on whether the policy that's in front of us needs adjustment and what that would look like. Tom, you had suggested a couple of adjustments. Do you want to begin?
Yeah. First of all, I didn't, this looks like the same thing we had last time. Is it the same?
It is. Yeah.
Okay. So, there wasn't any changes to our feedback.
Unless, unless there's some changes I didn't catch. No, it's the same. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Having had some time to think about it, you know, my, my, my original motivation here for trying to encourage these policies to be able to help the board out of those hopefully rare situations that, that the board might get into where it becomes an issue between superintendent or staff and, and the board based upon, you know, some, around some of our policies involving, you know, harassment or discrimination or retaliation, those kind of things. Where, where there wouldn't be, you know, some potential, I guess, for some, for some sort of conflict of interest. So, what I did is I went back and I did a little research and looked around at some of the various policies of school districts in the states. I found four or five school district policies that I think address some of these things. There's one in particular at Cherry Hills that, that I like, it's a very brief policy. Another one at Thompson, another one at Colorado Springs District 11, another one actually at Garfield and Rifle. That's a, and so, what I did is, is I've, I've come up with some proposed wording. I don't know if you want to discuss more about this before I have some suggestions or I can give them now, Sam, whatever you'd like.
Go ahead.
Yeah. So, so what I did is I went and looked at these policies and drew wording basically, you know, plagiarize if that's the right word, from these policies since a number of these have been in effect for a long, long time. So, I thought they're probably tried and true. And so, so I have a suggestion here. And I, I found some information this afternoon that listed these policies to everyone. But what I did is I went and put forth some, some wording that I would like to insert after the first paragraph. So, the end of the first paragraph says, "In addition to board knowledge is that school district has a need for legal counsel in special areas of law." So, the wording that I would like to suggest here, propose here is that the following. "The Board of Education shall appoint an attorney to represent the board upon such terms as may be mutually agreed between the board and the attorney. It shall retain a competent attorney or legal firm to systematically provide such services. The appointment shall be for two years on a fee basis with reappearance subject to vote of the board. A decision to seek legal advice or assistance from such attorney shall originate from the board or persons specifically authorized by the board. Individual board members request for information beyond a short response question must be coordinated with the board president in advance. Their appointment will be reviewed every two years." So, what I did is I took language pretty heavily from Cherry Creek with some provisions from some of the other school district to put this in there that I think that will help put parameters around that would keep this from being abused. But also provide the board itself and the board members itself some ability to consult, you know, a legal firm that we would have already approved and established and everybody knows about and a process by which to do that, which we didn't have before.
And that would be separate from the outside firm that also advises the district?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Kathy?
I was just going to say at a conversation with the Cherry Creek Board, and that's not how this policy is being implemented. So, I'm just confused, but they're, they're using it just, they have the same setup we do, which is in-house counsel and one outside firm, not two outside firms. And I think you're talking about two outside firms?
I'm talking about an outside firm for the board alone.
That's not what's going on in Cherry Creek, just so you know.
I don't know what's, what they're actually doing. I know what the policy says.
I called the Cherry Creek Board.
Well, it'd be interesting to see why they aren't following their policy, I guess.
Yes, Tina. Okay. Tina?
So, the, there, we got two emails, one from Tom that had this information. I'll be really honest, I was driving carpools. So, I didn't, and that's what I do on Tuesday afternoon, well, every afternoon. So, I haven't had time to look at the whole policies that you sent out and the context of them because these are excerpts from them and also just to see what other policies they have in place that might be working with those. Because the, the language you're proposing is so specific and also requires a dedication of funds that I'm really uncomfortable with. So, I'd like to have time to research that and also ask staff to research that with the districts that are named here just to see how it's being implemented, to Kathy's point. Because I, and if, I, this board has not been always great about remembering, oh, it's September 1st, we need to go back and look at the lawyer policy and reappoint it. You know, that's not something we really do. And so, I just want to be careful about giving ourselves a board responsibility that we're responsible for because I don't know who's going to do that every two years. That seems worrisome. And I'd like to just investigate because there are a couple of boards here that say it's, they have a term. And I'd like to know who's managing that process in that case. So, that would, those are some thoughts. And then Shelley, I didn't even get to read your email about the legal entity question. And I don't know, you could, you know, I think you talked about the, a different interpretation of whether the board is a legal entity that requires distinct representation. So, that's the other piece that I actually didn't have time to go through.
Sure. Shelley, then Jenny?
It was just a couple of sentences from a legal scholar on this issue. So, I didn't bore you with the whole article. So, it's just an excerpt. Tom, I have a couple of questions for you. So, the difference I see between what you just said and what the district's proposing here is that the district's proposing that the board reserve the right to obtain legal counsel. And you're proposing that we just go ahead and appoint an attorney upfront.
That's correct.
So, it's, I mean, it's, we're, in either case, we have the right to have a third party involved in this discussion, right?
That's correct. Yeah.
So, when you say fee bases, you, you use the word retain, I think, and also fee bases? Maybe I'm just confused about how lawyers get paid.
The wording that I lifted out of Cherry Creek's, not in terms of a retainer.
Right.
But in terms of that we have identified, maybe there's better language, that we have identified and approved as a board, this is a law firm we will work with. And then, we have negotiated with the law firm, the fee basis for which these services would be rendered.
So, we wouldn't pay them unless we used them, essentially. But they would be pre-appointed, so we would know who we were going to.
Exactly.
Because under this scenario, the district scenario, we probably would have to have some sort of discussion or vote before we would go do that, obtain this counsel. Whereas this way, they'd already be in place. Is that the difference?
Yeah, that's the difference. And that's why I see is the advantage of doing this, given some circumstances we ran into recently.
Right. Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Thanks, Shelley. Jenny?
So, my only comment is that if we, that I haven't had a chance to think about this or look at it either because it came kind of late. But, but my sense is that, that these policies, particularly the Cherry Creek one, which I did look at, you sent it to us last time, contemplate, they, they say the board, but they contemplate representation for the district. And, and so, my, my question for any research that gets done is how are these boards interpreting their policies? Because I think we may be talking about two separate things here. One is the, Tom's proposal that the board actually retain its own counsel as opposed to what I think these districts are doing, which is saying that the board is employing counsel, but the board is employing counsel for the district itself. And, which is sort of what we did last spring. I mean, it may, it may be a question of semantics, but what we did last spring was the board hired an attorney, but the attorney represented the district. It didn't represent the board. I mean, the law firm we hired represented the district, not the school board. And I believe billed the district and was paid by the district. And I think that would be, I don't, I don't think we're contemplating hiring and paying our own attorneys out of our own pockets. So, so, I, I share some of Tina's concerns about how we budget for this and how we manage it. But I also think that these examples may go to the hiring of an attorney, an outside attorney to represent the district, not, not the school board as a separate entity. And I would want to know about that before I use these policies as an example. Although I did, I agree, Tom, I do like the language in, from Colorado Springs 11 that, that you, I think you quoted just now, that said that typically you'd go through the board president before consulting an attorney. And I do agree with that language as opposed to the language that's more permissive, that's in the policy, the way it's on our agenda tonight.
Yes, Kathy?
I agree with that too, that language about going through the board president, other than short. I think it says beyond a short response question, which, so that part. And, and I don't have the heartburn about the term of a contract because I think we could just get used to having it be brought up. And I don't think it's bad practice to review our contracts every so often. So, I don't have a problem with that at all. I just have a disagreement as to, first of all, how it's interpreted and the role of the, I think the policy with those minor changes that we just talked about, we can do what we need to do and we don't need to go that extra step. I, I am nervous about distinguishing us as apart from the district. And I know that's just a difference of opinion that we may have on the board.
Okay. And Richard, do you have any, before we go back around?
Well, you know, I'm just reading the draft policy and frankly, I don't have a problem with the way it reads right now.
Let's see. Tina?
One thing, just going back to the Colorado Springs School District 11 policy, it reads to me that that's the lawyer they hire for the district, but it's voted on by the board, that that's not a third attorney.
You know, it's unclear when you read through policies like that, especially ones that are brief, when it says the board retains. And then they also maybe talk about general counsel. I saw some cases where they were talking a board attorney, and the board would choose attorney and then it would go on further and say then general counsel for the district and here are the duties. So, that was a little bit nebulous. And so, I haven't had time to research with the various policies and see what they're doing in practice. That may be a good thing. I had never anticipated that we would set up a board attorney that would fight with the school district attorneys. We are the school district. We decide what we want to do. So, that's, that's not the intent. The intent was to have a independent resource that a board or a board member could consult when there are issues that arise and maybe have conflicting legal opinions.
And so, I, and I, I think I have a different experience with board attorneys. So, I think one, I feel that the policy as written gives us plenty of latitude to hire a third party on the occasion that it happens. So, I don't really see a need to create a policy that gives us more, a third lawyer.
We're creating a policy anyway here because we don't have one. So, so let's, let's, let's talk it through and see, you know, what the ramifications are. Especially if we can apply lessons learned from the past would be, would be great.
Right. And I am reading the Colorado Springs 11 policy to just be for their normal school lawyer. I don't think it's for a, a board-specific because it refers to the complexity of school district operations as well as the, then it says the superintendent person's reporting to the superintendent or the board can go to the lawyer, you know, so I don't know.
Yeah. And that, that's an area of discussion. I don't have any problem. In fact, I think it might be wise to have, you know, a pre-approved firm that the board could consult if necessary. It wouldn't be something that would happen all the time, only in rare occasions, hopefully, that that would happen. And we would still have the same outside legal support for a general counsel for the, for the school district.
Maybe I'm reading that a little different, Tina. Or there's two parts of the policy from Springs District 11 that Tom has cited. from Springs District 11 that Tom is citing. And I'm looking at the second one, "In the event that a board member desires to engage or solicit legal advice from legal counsel other than those contracted for by the district, the board president must approve such a request in writing in advance. If the board president disapproves the request, the individual board member may appeal to the entire board at the next regular board meeting." So that's a process by which, as I read that, we would be going with this sentence in the policy that's been proposed, that we reserve the right to obtain independent legal counsel. And so in the event that we've done that and a, a board member would like to access that counsel, at least in this Springs District 11, they check with the board president. And the board president says okay, or if not, it's a full board discussion, right? So it's a, it's sort of an enhancement to the, the right that the board has to obtain independent counsel. If you do that, how do board members access that counsel? That's how I'm reading that. And that makes some sense to me, to add that detail. Richard?
So, so that, that's not in place now? Is that what you're saying? I mean...
Not, no.
Okay.
Richard, I just sent out a, a few minutes ago my proposed, you know, additions. And maybe that's what you're looking at. I had it in red.
But we can do it now. It's just not in our policy. It's, and we've done it. So...
It's not codified in...
Yeah, but I like the, the wording that you just liked. I like because we're not putting anyone on retainer.
Yeah. Shelley?
I think Tom was clear that we're not putting anybody on retainer anyway. That's not, that wasn't his intention. So Sam, what you, what you just read though implies that we've picked an attorney beforehand.
Right, yep.
So that, that's the difference between this and this. And then Tom, you said you took this from Cherry Creek? This specific language, let me read it to you. I wrote it down when you... "The Board of Education shall appoint an attorney to represent the board," right? That's the language that you used?
Yes.
From Cherry Creek?
Yeah. You know, I have to go back and look here. That's the, that's the wording that I lifted now. I don't have the Cherry Creek policy right in front of me.
Okay, but you took this from some policy, right? You didn't make up any of this?
I took that from some policy and I did change a few wording here or there. So my intent is that it would be to represent the board. So if I misquoted a policy, I apologize because that's my intent for it.
Well, you know, I'm, I'm, I like the idea of having somebody in place when you need to go to them quickly. And so the language you just read accommodates that. And this policy doesn't, but I think it's great to have this policy in place because right now we don't have a policy in place. So I think this is a big start and I would add that sentence and, you know, I'd be okay, I think.
Kathy?
I was just going to ask if we could get your final proposal and then bring it back around since we're trying to figure out what it says and what it doesn't say.
Sure.
Yeah.
This is a study anyway, so.
Yeah, no, it's not a study. We're not taking any action.
I know, but it's just...
We can talk about it again, yeah. And thank you for that. So Tom, why don't you send out some proposed language? And we'll consult with Melissa Barber as well. And then perhaps we can pull together something to, to study at a future board meeting. And Tina also expressed some, just wanting to have more time to digest some of this info.
Could you just provide the links to the policy that you're referencing in the, on a separate email or document or just so that it's easy to find exactly what you're going back to?
I probably can. I downloaded them all. I'll just, I'll just attach all the policies.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks, everybody. I appreciate the discussion. And thanks again, Melissa, for your assistance on this as well. Next item on our agenda is agenda setting. Yes, Kathy? Yes, this would be the time, or one of the times.
I was hoping to bring back, background the discussion on cameras in the high school and also a general discussion around safety. Safety? So school resource officers allocation, security allocations. We haven't had that conversation and I think it would be good to have some kind of presentation on it and have a conversation around that.
Okay. And the other thing we want to try to circle back to quickly is this ombudsman compliance idea that, you know, we haven't really had a chance to talk about as a board. So we're looking at part of our work session next week to talk about that. Richard?
Can I, can I just add one thing when you brought up the ombudsmen? We have redeveloped the job description. So we have the job description and we're ready to go. So are you asking us to wait until after you talk about it some more?
Well, I think that can be part of the discussion next week.
Okay.
We had talked about using half of our work session next week.
Okay, great. Thanks.
And postponing the discussion of policy J E E C C, which had been parked there. Richard?
Could we add also the, the cameras on the school buses?
So it was cameras in schools, also cameras on buses? Cameras?
Cameras.
Okay.
Especially with the special ed buses.
Oh, right, okay.
I had submitted an RFI for a revised estimate of the cost just for high schools, just in the common areas and the hallways.
Worth talking about.
When did you send that? We, we just exchanged a furtive glance because none of us have it.
A few weeks ago, but I'll resend it.
You sent an RFI on that?
What?
Okay, hold on. Did you send it to Laura?
Send it to you, I think. And I said, request for information. I'll go back and double check and resend it.
Well, I will apologize upfront if you send it to me because I don't think I have it. So it would just be really nice if you'd resend it.
No problem.
Thank you.
And I'll send it to Laura.
Okay, that's probably a really good idea. Thank you.
Okay.
Great. Leslie?
On the J E C C, I just had a question for the board. If we're going to make a change in practice, we open up open enrollment on November 1st. And so this is probably the last opportunity for the board to discuss a change in practice. And if we were going to make a change in practice, we would want to make sure we communicate that to families bef- on November, when the window opens on November 1st.
Duly noted. Thank you. Anything else, board members? All right, hearing? What? Well, I think if we're going to make a change...
We can put it on the next...
Yeah.
Agenda. It would be done by November 1st and we can publicize our current priorities.
That's not what you're saying?
Right. So we had planned to talk about it at the October 17th work session for the board to kind of understand the proposal to change the practice on our open enrollment priorities. So if we don't talk about it then, then...
We're not going to be able to change it in time for this...
Correct.
...open enrollment window.
Right.
Is that, is that a policy or a, just reg?
It's a regulation, yes.
We can, yeah, we can talk about, we could talk about it on the 17th. Could we also talk about it on the 24th?
Yes.
Yeah.
Application, although it would be better for the community if we could do it on the 17th.
Right. Our plan is we normally send the notice out on the 20th or the 23rd so that families have enough time to understand about the, how the priorities are going to work.
Oh, okay, so the 17th really, okay.
Right.
Well, we can fit it all in, yeah. It'll just, just maybe block out a little extra time for that work session, board members. Nine, nine-thirty. I'll get back to you on that. Okay. No, a lot to talk about. All of it important. And I appreciate everybody's time and attention. But I think with that, we're adjourned for this evening. Thanks.